Let me call on Mr. Jeff Plattenburg to introduce the visitors from the county first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moon. We appreciate the opportunity. We've got some really important people, some heavy hitters, really, for Fairfax County Government that we appreciate them coming in and volunteering to present annually the update as to things that are happening across the county. With us today, we have Ms. Tracy Strunk, the Director of Zoning Evaluation Division for Fairfax County Department of Planning and Zoning, and Mary Ann Gardner, the Director of the Planning Division. So we're very fortunate to have both Mary Ann and Tracy here with us to talk about what's been going on with the county. With that, Mr. Moon, if you wish, we can just go right through.
Okay. We have about 45 minutes for this portion of CIP work session, and my understanding is that presentation by the visitors from the county will take about 10 to 15 minutes. So we're not going to interrupt your presentation. We'll hold off all my, all our questions and comment until you are first done with, and then we'll have some discussion or conversation. Please.
A point of clarity, did you say 45 minutes?
Forty-five minutes.
So we cut this in half?
Forty-five minutes for this part, and then another 45 minutes for the second part.
Okay.
Get my mic turned on again. I'm Tracy Strunk. I'm with the Zoning Evaluation Division of the Department of Planning and Zoning, and we're the folks that do the current development. So actual development proposals that come in, we evaluate those and take them forward through the Board of Supervisors, see if we can get that. And maybe before I jump in, I'm going to do a little bit of sort of the big trends that are showing up and what we're seeing, talk about some of our areas of highest development activity, and then I'm going to briefly go through some of the comprehensive plan, which is Mary Ann's group, but, which is sort of the step before it gets to our development thing. And then at the very end, I have a little slide. I know our office and the Planning Commission has been doing work with the school board and some other people about just how we all work together and different ways we fit in. So we've got a little bit to sort of talk about the different places that we plug in with each other. So this, this is just a slide, a bit about the forces that are kind of showing up in development review in the county. This is similar to what you probably saw last year. Most of our development is occurring in our activity centers, our metro corridors, our commercial revitalization districts, and there's other areas that are labeled as activity centers. But the comprehensive plan does direct most of our growth to occur in those areas because that's where we have infrastructure, and that is actually what we're seeing. The part of the goal for that is really centered in the transit areas and the metro corridors, for example, and the new Silver Line corridor. The idea being that, that people are moving to Northern Virginia, they're moving to Fairfax County. We have to put them somewhere, they need to live somewhere, and putting them someplace that they can utilize transit is going to make the most sense in terms of leveraging that investment that we've made in the community. So that's sort of the two-second background to why we suggest that those are areas that we want to focus development. And increasing transit trips, increasing mixed use, increasing walkability are all those things that we look at for development. Those are also things, obviously, that are going to have an impact on schools and how you all get people to the schools, for example. The other thing that that really ends up having an impact on, way back in the day, we did not necessarily think that our corridors, our development corridors were places we would have residential development. So for Tysons and the Reston corridor right along the metro, for example, are not places that we have a whole lot of public infrastructure in terms of schools and parks and things like that. So a lot of our planning activities and then development review activities are focused on how do we fit those infrastructure pieces into the new residential character of those areas. I did, I did want to touch briefly, some of you all may know about what we call the new proffer legislation, which was some legislation that went into effect in July of 2016, so we've had it for a year now, that limited the types of proffers that could be expected or can be accepted by the Board. And proffers, of course, are the voluntary commitments that developers make to offset impacts on their development. So in areas that are, that the, what we call non-exempt areas, that the proffer legislation applies, it severely limits what sorts of proffers we can accept. In particular, cash proffers come under very close scrutiny. Most of the county, most of the areas, as I said, most of our development is in activity centers. So from that standpoint, it's not actually impacting that much of our, our development. Since, since it went into effect, we've actually had three residential cases in areas that the proffer legislation applies. Those are under review right now. I think they probably have 10 or 20 housing units each. So it's a, it's a relatively small number. And even prior to that, we went back and looked, and a comparable period, we would have seen maybe five to 10 cases in that area. So it's, it's a small number. It's going to have some impact. The smaller home builders certainly see the impact, but in terms of kind of the overall impact to the county and the number of students, it, it isn't going to have that much of an impact. Where it does impact is our ability to ask for contributions towards schools in those areas. But again, it's a pretty small number of units we're talking about. And I did just, I've got it up here, but just wanted to, to say, you know, development is market-driven. So we can talk about the forces that are impacting it and where people want to build residential and where they are, but, but we can't actually force anyone to build any of the residential anywhere. So. So Tysons, of course, is the big, yup, we've got it up there. Tysons is, is sort of one of the biggest things that's happening in the area. We do, our, our Office of Community Revitalization puts out this document every year, which is a kind of a tracking document on implementing the comprehensive plan, primarily for transportation, but also public facilities. That was something that the Board thought was very important, was we, we did a comprehensive plan, we planned for all this new development in Tysons, so then what happened? And keeping an eye on how development is going, how are we tracking the public facilities. So they put that, they put this document out, and that's where most of the Tysons information comes from. We have had about 30-plus major rezoning applications in Tysons. About 25 of those are since the, the plan change in 2010. So that's a lot of activity. We've got another nine, I think, under review right now. And of course, as I mentioned, the major shift with Tysons was really to create a mixed-use center and to add the residential. So the current approvals, so those 25 that we've had approved, could change our current level of residents. Right now, we have around 21,000 people living within Tysons. That could go up, as you can see, as many as 81,000. It's a big scary number, but it's a long time, too. And what we're seeing is generally, on the residential side, between one and three new buildings open a year. Those buildings probably have, tend to have around 400, maybe 500 dwelling units in them. So that's the number of new units we're seeing come online. And more recently, the trend that we're seeing is some of those high-rise, most of those are high-rise, some mid-rise, but we're actually, especially in the high-rise, having the developers come to us and say, you know what, we think that it's going to take us longer than normal to lease this building up. The Kingston, which is the first building at the Commons over near the McLean Metro, is opening soon. And they figure it's going to take them at least two years to lease up and have actually come and are going through the process right now to get approval to lease out, it ends up being technically a hotel, but basically lease out on a short-term basis, any number of those units. So that's, I think, maybe 3,500, not 3, 350 dwelling units there, that they don't actually even expect all of those to be occupied with real people living here for, for two years. So that's, that's the trend that we're seeing in those, those buildings. And in Tysons, the plan does call, there is obviously Westgate Elementary School within the boundaries of Tysons, and the plan calls for two additional elementary schools, one of which we have already secured the land for with one of our early cases. The second, the second new one, third elementary school, we're still looking for a site. The plan actually, and this was all developed with your all-staff, assumes that the middle school, the growth in middle school and high school students will be accommodated with the existing schools serving Tysons that are outside the area. So there's no call in Tysons for a new middle or elementary, middle or high school. We have, actually, just this, just this year in this Tysons annual report, started putting some schools' numbers in. We amended the plan last year, and a big point of conversation with a lot of the surrounding communities was how many students are coming out of Tysons, is it tracking with what we thought it was going to be? So according to what you all told us and what we put in the report, in September 2016, there were around 1,800 students residing within Tysons, and about 16, 60 of those were attending public, Tysons Public Schools. So that's about 92% of the kids living in Tysons are attending public schools. Obviously, we have the new basis Independent School, which is a private school which has opened within Tysons, and, and we've had some other people talk to us about some things. So, and even some of the high-rise residential buildings have talked about, a lot of these buildings have a lot of amenities in them, including what we would normally look at and think is office space for people who live there to work. And they said what they're actually seeing in some of those sort of small conference rooms and small rooms is people who live in the building who are homeschooling their kids using those facilities, because they have the screens and the wireless and the, all that, that space, which is, I'm not sure how much of an effect that is, but it's kind of interesting. The other piece of that concern that the surrounding communities had was not just capacity for students. They're obviously concerned about the capacity of the schools that are serving Tysons as Tysons develops. But two things that I thought were, were particularly interesting in those conversations, the desire of people to see schools in Tysons as a community-building feature of the school, you know. So there were people who said to us, well, you really, it doesn't matter that you can accommodate the high school students in the existing schools. There should be a school in Tysons because that's what makes it a place. So that was an interesting thought from the surrounding areas. And then the impact on traffic. Vienna, in particular, was concerned about if the students who live in Tysons are traveling to schools in Vienna on what's probably one of the most congested internal routes, how does that impact residents and the traffic? How does that impact the school students? And so those, you know, it's interesting, I think, that it's not just capacity that people are interested in when they're talking about the schools in these areas. I would, the chart that you see there, this bar chart, if you can see behind my head, is in our annual report, and that is the number of students that are residing in the Tysons area. It looks like it jumps up in those last two bars. That's not because there's really a projection that that number of students will be there, but that's just a reflection of, if you looked at the number of dwelling units that were approved and the number that were proposed, that's how many students you'd end up with. But again, as I said, things aren't, everything that has been approved, we've approved 45 million square feet of development, it's going to take a number of years before that develops, you know, you know, decades before that all develops out. So the fact that those, those bars are higher at the end shouldn't, shouldn't be taken to mean that in the next two years, that, that number of students is going to jump. And further out, Reston is our, is the next piece of our corridor, and this is just a map that sort of shows all the development that's, that's coming, the proposed developments that are in that area. Again, this area was primarily non-residential before the new plan was, was put into place. And you can see sort of in the center there, that's, except for the town center. The town center is included in the Reston transit, transit planning and the transit areas. So obviously, town center has, has, has always had a residential component and will. The big white blob at the very top of that town center there is actually the, the joint project between the county and, and Inova to replan what we, what they call the Town Center North. So where the library, homeless shelter, police, Supervisor Hudson's office, all of that area is just entering, beginning the planning process. So those numbers are actually, show up in the next numbers I'll show you, but that's, that's another sort of long-term project. In the Reston area, we've had nine major rezoning applications that had, with residential that have been approved since the plan was adopted, which was in 2014. Most of those were to add residential in areas that did not have any residential component before then. And that could add an additional 2,200 dwelling units. In terms of build-out, sort of, I probably expect it to be similar to what we're seeing in Tysons. It's going to be, there's only so much capacity out there. It's going to be over time that, that people build out. We've got another 15 under review, and those are just the ones with residential. Those aren't, aren't our total numbers, but as I said, a lot of it, a lot of what we're seeing does have, is to add the residential component. One of the trends that we're seeing in Reston in particular is where, when we were doing the planning, we really thought it was going to be high-rise around the metro. What we're seeing in, in the Reston corridor is a desire to build townhouses, which obviously are larger and have a different impact on school generation than a small high-rise unit. On the other hand, you can fit a lot fewer of them on the land. So we're not quite sure how that's going to play out over time. You know, it's a unit type that generates more students, but on the other hand, it's a smaller number of units. So that's what we're seeing in, in Reston. And an area that's sort of coming online is the last metro station, the Innovation Center area. It's an area, I think I charmingly called it, an area of emerging focus there. And we've had four major rezonings since that was, I believe, replanned in 2014 as well. That's why we picked that number. And again, that's about 3,000 more units in that area, mostly mid-rise and sort of that, what we refer to as a multifamily, but it's kind of a condo flat-type, type building. And we've got another four under review. This is another area where we're seeing probably a heavier, a much heavier push on the residential percentage. And in some of these areas, I don't know the exact numbers, but in some of the areas in this, in this part of the county, the plan was looking for even as much as a 50-50 split residential, non-residential, and we're seeing people come in, coming in and saying, hey, could we build all residential? And that's a conversation that we're having with these guys and your, your planning staff as well, about how do we evaluate that against the plan language? Typically, people, typically looking for residential has been, you know, we've allowed people to sort of go above that, that mix to go heavier on the residential thing because obviously, for the traffic implications, having more residential rather than, than office in general tends to do things a little better for the traffic. On the other hand, that has a bigger impact on the schools. And so one of the things that we, we're doing in some of the cases that are in now and in coming in in the future are really making that an issue and saying, no, going, pushing that percentage way out of whack is not in accord with the plan. That's not what we planned for. That's not what we're looking for. So that's something that we're certainly looking at in those areas. And I'm going to breeze a little bit more through this. Luckily, Mary Ann is here to answer the, the questions on the comprehensive plans, because that's, that's her office. And that's, obviously, the plan is the guide. So this sets up what people then can come to my office and ask me for in terms of a particular development site. The number 28 comprehensive plan amendments, I think, probably refers, is a little bit flexible number and perhaps a slight overstatement, because if we had several proposals in one larger area, that, I think that 28 number counts all of those, although staff might look at that as sort of one area. Some of the major areas, and I'll talk a little bit more about them, the Dulles Suburban Center study, the Richmond Highway Corridor, Fairfax Center has been recently approved, I believe. We just did that one. Lincolnia's coming. So those are sort of the big areas. The, probably the big thing for you all to be aware of as well is the stuff on the right side of the screen here, which is the site-specific plan amendment process. And this is to amend the comprehensive plan. It's going on now. The Northern Area is what they're looking at, the, the part of that map in blue. It's sort of similar to the former area plans review process that we went through. They're taking nominations now, and then the process will go over the next several years. And obviously, they'll be on anything that has residential or potential impact on schools. There'll be a lot of outreach done with the school staff on that. So that's, in general, just so you're aware, that we're going to start seeing proposals in the northern part of the county. Just to hit some of the high points in the comp plan, the, am I on the right one? Embark, which is the Richmond Highway, is really looking at taking Richmond Highway and creating a much more mixed-use, transit-integrated, walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible area, looking at adding residential and a lot of the residential amenities into that area. That is anticipated to be done in 2018. I think the plan text just went out on that. Mary Ann will know more on that. So that's been an ongoing process. The Dulles Suburban Center is also looking to be, to be wrapped up. These are a series of plan amendments that were proposed out in the Dulles Corridor, as you can see on the map there. That should also come to the Board by early 2018. So should we, we should be seeing those similar, similar issues that we've seen in, in the other things I've been talking about. Lincolnia is a new area that, that has been under study for a while, and this is kind of a two-phase process. First, they're looking at designating part of Lincolnia as a community business center, which has some implications in the plan and some zoning. That should be done in 2018. And then based on that process, there might be a further process to look at the land area designations that could look at the land use mix and that, and some of those things. So that's, that will, that's a slightly longer frame. And then, as I said, in terms of, of interface between the Department of Planning and Zoning and the school staff, there's a couple places we touch, obviously. And the comprehensive planning process, which is, which is the development guide, it's sort of broad brush. Your staff always provides us information about the schools that serve a particular area where a plan amendment is proposed, what the capacities are, are of those, and if there's planned improvements that will change that capacity. And give us guidance on, okay, if we assume X number of dwelling units coming in, what's that going to do to the enrollment? So we can provide that information in our staff reports. We can, at that, in that sort of timeframe, provide back to you broad brush. But of course, the, the comprehensive plan, as I said, it goes back to, you know, development's actually market-driven. So we can change the comprehensive plan to allow residential development, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen at any particular point in time. Similarly, during the development review process, which is when there is a particular development on the table, we get very good guidance from your staff about what schools, again, are served, what the capacity is of those schools, and the impacts to the proposed development based on that. And that's, you know, you all update those numbers every year about the cost. And there is, for schools in particular, there is a, a formula that the school board and the Board, as you all know, worked out a number of years ago, that, that looks at what that proffer contribution should be. And except for those areas that are subject to the new proffer law, that's something that we sort of, we see with every application that comes in. And then, in terms of what we can provide you all in that sort of same realm, is we can, you know, provide information like this, how many development cases are we seeing coming in? The question I always, when I was, was actually in OCR and working on that Tysons report, was, okay, well, this has all been approved, but when's it going to happen? And we, we can kind of, again, it's market-driven. We can do sort of broad brush if a development has just gotten its base approval, you know, that could be, that could be any timeframe. If someone's come through and gotten sort of the next stage of approval, which is generally what we call a final development plan amendment, we usually expect to see that on the ground, maybe five or six years. And if the development has gone the next step and gotten its site plan approval, perhaps three years, depending on how long it takes to build. So we can, based on how far a developer has moved along in the process, we can provide a little bit more guidance as to how many years out you might be seeing those, might be seeing those units online and people living in them and producing children. Although, again, you know, anyone could change their, change their track in midstream. So. So that was my presentation, which hopefully was clear. And then if you have questions, then we're happy to answer.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Strunk. I think we have about 20 minutes left, and I have Ms. McLachlan and Mrs. Strauss on my list. Anybody else? Raise your hand right now. Sure. I have Palchik Korbesanders and Ms. Evans. Anybody else? So I have five Board members with 20 minutes. Ms. McLachlan.
Yes. Thank you very much. This is a wealth of information, unfortunately not enough time for us to ask, I think, the questions we'd really like to, to dive into. But at a very macro level, I, I find the information you've provided here about Tysons to be concerning from the school side of things. And so I very much welcome you, as the county staff, being able to, you know, indicate if there's anything that we can do to help with what I'm, I'm looking at is a perfect storm of problems coming in terms of the, the residential housing, you know, projections, that more families are moving in than expected. And we know then what's that going to do to the spillover effect on our schools. I had driven through Tysons, I think it was last Thursday, at roughly 4 o'clock, 4:30. It was absolute gridlock. So from coming from Tysons just to FCPS headquarters took me over 50 minutes. And, I mean, it's basically two exits on the Beltway. So I, I shudder to think, this is before all this development's really happening. And so I understand transportation, we know Americans love their cars. And so the more families that move in, the more cars on the roadways, whether we have their jobs located there or not. And so I guess I would just say, is there any guidance you can give us that as we interface with the Board of Supervisors? You work really well with our county, with our school-side staff, but I, I know in the end, it comes up to the level of what the school board and the Board of Supervisors have to have a shared understanding and a shared appreciation of what we're about to face. So I guess my primary question is, is there any advice you can give us? And number two, but maybe as sort of a preface to it, am I chicken-littling this thing, or is this information you gave us is as concerning as I'm picking up, which is, we may have major school facility challenges, let alone the roadway and gridlock based on the numbers of what we're seeing, people moving into these dwellings that we weren't expecting? The volume?
It's hard to say, I guess. I mean, I think in Tyson, the, in Tysons, I'm actually not as concerned about it, to be honest. I mean, in Tysons, we've got, we already have the next school site that we need. And I think we're actively looking and have been working on some of the other things. So in Tysons, I think it's going to be a planning exercise. I think knowing sort of where the students are going, and I think the impacts on school boundaries are obviously going to be a concern for you guys. But I think capacity-wise, we probably have the capacity there. I, I think, you know, the idea is that you can put more people into Fairfax County if we can manage it more effectively and if we can get the amenities in so people don't have to drive as much and we can, you know, we have a lot of, even on the roads, we have a lot of capacity on our roads. We don't have a lot of capacity on our roads at rush hour and when things happen. So it's, it's, it's not as much that off-peak hours, we don't have the capacity to deal with that. So if, if people are moving in, and yes, they're still going to drive to go to the store at certain times, they're still, you're going to, you're still going to have to drive, you're still going to have to drive, frankly, probably to your school, to the recreational things, to the, to play baseball, because those types of things, yes, there might be a baseball field near you, but that's not necessarily where your kid's team is going to be playing. So, but if, the more of that that can happen off-peak, I think we can probably manage that. And I, I would say, in terms of advice, just looking out the long term, which I know is what you all try and do, trying to look at solutions beyond, which I understand we're also working on, beyond just building a new school, but using other schools more effectively, doing more, are there ways that we can work with, to repurpose existing office buildings or to work with a new office building that's coming in and provide facilities in there? Or where, are there, are there things that we can move, we can more effectively use the space we have? Because we're not just going to be able to build, there's just not, there's just not existing land. Whether we could afford it or not, the land just doesn't even exist to just keep building new facilities the way we've used to. So I think it's, it's looking at all of those creative things and keeping an eye. We're, like I said, we're, we're trying to do more of the tracking and to sort of see, okay, this is when we planned it, how many units we thought might be here. This is how many units actually got built. This is what we expected the student yield to be out of those places. This is the student yield that we're seeing. So I think just keeping an eye on all of those things is going to be really important.
Okay. I, I'll just close by saying, as someone who moved here to the area in 1989, I almost don't recognize Fairfax County, and I, I am very worried that where some might say we have plenty of development And I am very worried that where some might say we have plenty of development to do, I would strongly disagree. I think this place is becoming almost untenable. We rank in the top five cities in the country for horrible traffic. The commute hours are no longer two hours each way, is encroaching on three hours. Before we know it, rush hour will be from the morning all the way until people go home at night for dinner. So I will just say to my colleagues here, I put my marker down, we've got problems in the next decade here, and I really hope together, as elected officials, we'd better start being a little more aware of how bad it is becoming.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
So could we go to the, what I think is the first page of your, bottom of your first So I'll start my lineup. So the, you know, there's a famous line of, you know, "I heard what you said at the beginning, I heard what you said at the end." What was that thing there in the middle? So this thing there in the middle, this new public facilities and infrastructure needed in areas previously not planned for residential, I don't know if anybody's able to discern that, but that's the bombshell here, because I don't know what public facilities you're talking about, what that means, but that's the, that's the meat and the sandwich there of who's funding it? Because I don't think we're getting the proffers. I mean, it's one thing to say you're planning for it, it's another thing to say you're going to fund it. And since we're reliant on the county for the money, you know, and I agree with everything Ms. McLaughlin said about, I mean, I think it's catastrophic to think that you're talking about going from 21,000 to potentially 80-plus thousand, you know, in a development phase, where you can't get, I mean, Tyson's is the crow flies, is two, what, two miles that way? We don't talk about miles, we talk about time. I mean, people who move here are stunned that it could take you 45 minutes to go two miles. Forty-five minutes to go two miles? And we're talking about quadrupling the number? I mean, this is just beyond my, my expectation. But the, and I don't even know which one it is, where you talk about the Dulles end of things, because I think, I think the Tyson's part is bad enough, and I do want to ask a question about the proffers. But I'm looking at that end of Dulles, where, you know, that encroaches all the way down towards Westfield, and we can't have a reasonable conversation with our colleagues on the board supervisors about capital needs and the disparate distribution of capital dollars, the fact that we have more, and I brought this up at the joint board supervisors meeting, there was not very many of us there, but that we have high-intensity-use facilities, high-intensity needs, we have a dearth of seats, and trailers galore. And in the corridor just south of that, and you said, well, maybe you could use some, you could use your buildings more efficiently. I don't even actually, and I don't mean to be, but I'm a little bit stunned by that statement, because between Chantilly High School and Centerville High School, in four years, I'm missing 1,000 seats. A thousand. One thou, that's another, that's half of another high school. I don't know how much more efficiently the board supervisors expects us to use the facilities we have. And then you're talking about encroaching further into, because the push from Westfield, it's, it's not any rosier at Oakden or at Woodson. Well, actually, it is rosier. It's just not, it adds to the problem. So the question is, redraw the boundaries to where? Where do you, where do you want me, where do you want me to redraw a boundary to, to come up with 1,000 more seats for a high school? There's no place to go. So I'm at a loss when I look at how the proffers are coming in, how they're funded, whether or not we're getting the funding, the fact that we get half of, sort of, on the calculation. What is the expectation? What are you saying in this meeting that happens over there at the government center to them? Because this is what you're saying to us, but what hap, do you go over there and say, you know, new, new public facilities? I can't, I don't have enough room in the public facilities, I already have. I'm not maintaining, we're not maintaining them at the same levels. Are you getting the maintenance dollars that you need for capital? Yeah, so we're not, we're not expanding what we have. I can't put, I mean, if I want to have, let's see, at Centerville High School, I'm missing 555 seats in four years. At Chantilly, I'm missing 431. At Woodson, you're missing 267. And these are with, you know, 14, 16, 23 trailers. So I'm educating already in trailers as the, as the default expansion plan, and I see on there, new public facilities? I'm like, I don't, I don't have a place to put the kids I already have. And that's without the Tyson side. This is the Dulles side that's hitting me, and I said it when we had the one Fairfax presentation, that I think that we're on a, and it's very rare that I do a full-out chicken-liddle. We are at a looming crisis on facilities. We have aging facilities, we're not getting the money from the board of supervisors, we're not increasing the capital dollars. The more students are coming, and we're talking about developing and adding, I don't know, 10, 20, 50, 75, 80,000 more people at a time when infrastructure is already not meeting existing needs and it's aging rapidly, and we're not planning for any new. And now we're talking about over here, with our other hand, doing new public facilities. I'm just wondering what's happening over there that we're, you know, it's a, there is not, there's a dissonance in what's happening.
Maybe if I can, you asked several questions.
Yes, I'll own that. One, so I had to fit them all in.
They were bullet pointed behind the, I understand your, your major concern is that of funding, basically. And obviously, that's a question that the school board will need to discuss with the board of supervisors. But a couple things I can mention. One is the idea about using space more efficiently. We weren't talking about your schools by any means. We were talking about perhaps using existing office buildings to be able to repurpose those for school uses. There was just an amendment to the comprehensive plan last year that supported this idea of, we call them vertical schools, to maybe look at schools through this, this new lens of perhaps there are buildings that exist today that can be used. The idea of the, the traffic getting worse and worse, and why are we putting more people in our activity centers is, right now, before our activity centers were built out, I think the average commute here in the county was something like 40 to 45 minutes, and that's probably on a good day now. The idea, so you can't, we only have so much space to...
I don't understand the answer to the question, though, because just saying, well, look at repurposing commercial buildings, you still have to buy them. You still have to repurpose them, you still have to remodel them. And we don't have the seats for what we already have, because there's a disparate distribution of the capital dollars that we already have, and there really wasn't intimation to use our space more efficiently. So what is the value of the proffer side that the county is getting? Because I already know that there's an inverse relationship. We have more capital infrastructure than do the board of supervisors, yet they have more of the capital dollars. Is that the same for, what's the, what's the value of the proffer money that they're getting versus what the school board is getting?
You mean, does their proffer money support 100% the cost?
No, what's the value? What's the value of, how much are they getting proffer-wise versus what we're getting?
We can go back and, and look. I'm not sure that the contributions that come to the school board, I mean, the contributions that come for the schools, I think go to the school, so I don't want 100% say that and then, and then not share. The question is, are the, is the board of supervisors getting cash proffers for fire stations and things like that versus not schools? It's a case-by-case basis. I mean, schools are really the only ones where we have sort of that formula that's out there that you referred to, that's the half percent, and that's, was something that was...
Okay, this is what, I'd like this to go down for our next step. Look, we, we have shared desires, and including things like preschool, that this board gets beat up on all the time. But if we don't have a better distribution of the capital dollars for more of the infrastructure used by more people, used more intensely, plus, uh, public use that gets into our facilities and is using it basically seven days a week, almost, you know, I don't know, 18 hours a day, we, the looming crisis with what you presented on top of it, I mean, talk about, you know, the straw that broke the camel's back. I just don't see the combination of the, the distribution of the proffers, the proffer values, the capital crush on our, on our existing facilities, never mind the plan for apparently new public facilities, which I don't necessarily know what they are, when we haven't taken care of the needs that we do have, and you have an increasing student population. I, I think we have a very, very serious problem that, that has got to be addressed. And, and this, unfortunately, I think pulls back the curtain for, I'm sure the rest of my colleagues will see how, how serious it is in not the long-term future, the short, the very near-term future.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I think that's a conversation we will need to have with the board of supervisors. I have Ms. Palchek and Ms. Karen Corbin Sanders and Ms. Evans.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Thank you, and I think Ms. Schultz very well stated some of my concerns. I know Ms. Evans and I are having these conversations as we sit with the schools committee. And I guess my question, something that wasn't brought up, is I know we have this formula that we're looking at, but I, and I guess I would love to hear from our staff again, especially when we look at the long term, right? Let's all be frank here, the proffers don't even come close to covering even our capital, initial capital costs, right? Not to mention the long term. My understanding is, especially for the multi-unit buildings, residences, that formula we are using is way outdated. And as buildings get older, we do see more and more children. So I know we're starting to have that conversation, and I don't know, Mr. Snead or Jeff, if you like, to provide more input, but at this point, not to be pointing fingers at each other, I know there's frustration, and I know we want to figure out how to help the community move forward while also keeping in mind that if we're not funding our schools, our facilities, our infrastructure, it's not a long-term comprehensive plan, right? It's a short-term plan toward unsustainability. So as the experts and the facilities experts in the room, perhaps you can, you know, just provide us with a little, and maybe when we have more time, a little feedback guidance on, on what do you see as ways for us to better work in conjunction and find a more feasible plan when we have less to work with in a county that is growing so quickly?
If I can address that, Ms. Palchek. What I really like is the fact that, you know, having these folks come and, and work with us and developing the relationships that we have, we have gone heads and tails above where we had been before, not only in the schools committee, but also working staff to staff for an awareness about the impact and the depth, breadth of the problem that both Ms. Schultz and you, and I'm sure the rest of members of the board are talking about. Because it is quite clear, the proffers, the evolution of the proffer, and Mr. Moon knows this very well and commented on it before, we were grateful at the time of that development to be even getting that 50%. That was, that was a one step. Well, as time evolves, we realize that that's a legacy system. And the conversation about that is, although we're much appreciative as schools to be receiving anything, we've been able to evolve as well to identify with more clarity the true capital impact. Then the law changes. And it talks to direct impact. And Mr. Snead did an outstanding job with Ms. Gillis, Jessica, and Kevin, working with the county to identify what that really means. Okay, so here we have the zoning folks, they're communicating, working with us now. They're starting to identify little nuances in the comprehensive master plan as amended that provide us with an opportunity to start getting some of those things as a requirement or as necessary in terms of the applicant's application for the development, that they must address this, this, and this. And we're just now getting to the point where we're saying schools is an impact that must be considered by anybody coming in. If we can get that codified through the comprehensive master plan process, much like the park authority does, then we will be taking care of that much-needed concern. And I have to tell you, it's through working with you, Ms. Evans, and Karen Corbin Sanders, and the rest of the board, working with your colleagues, the board of supervisors working with us on development, and the, Ms. Faust district, Mr. Faust districts, and Janie working with Mr. Faust. So it's been an evolution, but we're having the conversations and we're communicating about what it will take to get it done. Now, the second thing, so that's the first thing, we're having these conversations, somebody could say critically from an armchair quarterback, too late, too little too late. Well, I say, at least we're having them now. Yes, it's late, there is no doubt, but at least we're having them. And then the second thing I'll say, and then I'll shut up, is that not only do we work this initial plan, but we have a perfect opportunity with what is going on in the Tyson's region to do a case study to see if the initial planning of the initial two school sites and the yields that we're getting, keep in mind, these developments didn't happen overnight, these plans were approved, and then how many of the buildings have been built? Out of how many that were planned? Not many. They're still going up, but guess what? We're not getting the yields from those, from the new ones. Hmm, interesting. Where are we getting yields from? The existing older ones that are in the Tyson's area. So we've got a perfect case study, to the point that was made by Tracy about monitoring what's going on and seeing exactly what we need to do with that. So if we're monitoring what we approved, right, and we have the legislative piece where Mary Ann's looking at working with us through this schools committee to find the right mix of language in the comprehensive master plan as amended, then we get it codified for any new development that comes down the pike. Well, guess what? You're seeing a whole huge plan, that some things are already down the river, right? There are already approved plans, but there are a whole bunch of other ones that are in process. And that's where I think our focus, our opportunity truly will be. But because we're having these communications, because I'm so appreciative of Mary Ann and Tracy and the work that they're doing, and the work that Kevin's been doing with them to try and get, and Jessica, oh my gosh, to get us in that tent and to get those conversations so we can get it codified, that's, that's where we start seeing those results.
And I would just follow up, and I think this is number one, secondary that it's been on my mind is also the transportation, the transit issue. So, you know, from not having enough crossing guards, which I've talked to police officers who think they're covering all of our need in crossing guards, I can tell you my schools and parents will not agree with that, to how do we get kids, you know, out of cars, into walking, bicycling, taking the bus? So that's an area where I know some of my colleagues may agree, rather than being told, oh, well, and then finally GPS on the, on the county buses, which I'm very excited about, let's work on that together, because we see an aspect of it that definitely affects what's happening in the county. So I hope on the transportation side, it can be more collaborative.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palchek. I have Ms. Corbin Sanders to be followed by Ms. Evans and Mrs. Strauss, who have already used up 15 minutes. So please consider that, Ms. Corbin Sanders.
I will try to be quick. Thank you very much for this presentation. I think that it's timely. I would urge that I would not stay focused only on Tyson's, just the amount of work that has occurred and ground being broken in the northern part of Richmond Highway over the past year. If I add up everything that's been approved and where they're actually starting to demolish buildings, I see 2,500 new condos and apartments and close to 500 new townhouses and single-family homes on the Richmond Highway corridor, if I extend down to South County as well. So I think that this is something that we need to be aware. Somebody referenced, we have a tsunami coming towards us when we talk about capacity in our schools, and it's not a long-term tsunami, it's actually a medium-term... it's actually a medium-term. One of the things I would urge is that when we look at our yields, that we look at a connection between the affordability of the dwellings being built and the yields, because it's my understanding, in the past, we've looked at kind of a one-size-fits-all, an apartment yields X amount, a townhouse yields Y, and a single-family yields Z, but depending on it. And I think, Jessica, if you can kind of talk through a little of what you're seeing, that'd be helpful, because I know you've been very active in all the Embarck Richmond Highway discussions. And then the last thing is, kind of following up on Ms. Palczak's comment about the aging of some of our buildings, and how there is almost a delayed yield based on as the building becomes older, it becomes more affordable, and then we have a higher yield level there. And then just briefly on proffers, I understand that proffers has been our single source for funding for our buildings, or not our single source, but a primary source. And I would like us to think a little bit outside of the box on this, because as you know, we talked about legislative agenda earlier today. We didn't have any language on the proffers in our legislative agenda. We kind of got surprised by the proffer bills that were adopted a couple years ago, or 18 months ago. So we might want to have an assessment from you all on whether we need to do something different with proffers, or do we need to look at some other funding formulas, such as if people are, I liked the term that Ms. Darinat Kofax used about children's education initiatives, maybe we need to look at that in how we fund from other sources.
All right, who was next on the list? Ms. Evans?
Ms. Evans.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you all for joining us today.
My colleagues, you know, what's happening outside is something beyond our control. It's the county employees, not school systems.
Mr. Moon, are you going to have Jessica respond to what I asked?
Please.
My mistake, I thought that you meant that as a next step. Looking at the age of the building and the outputs of students, that's something that we'd like to focus on for short-term and long-term projections. As far as looking at the comprehensive plan portion, where are the developments happening versus what we have already, teardowns, rebuilds? And then also, we're looking at household sales, like housing sales in the turnover of a neighborhood, not necessarily new dwelling units. Is that helpful?
It's helpful in our planning, but I think it's also important for my colleagues on the board and people in the audience to understand that those are additional pressure points on our schools. And I'm particularly concerned when we have redevelopment that you, you know, for example, on Fort Belvoir, you had a bunch of townhouses redeveloped on Fort Belvoir. Well, when they redeveloped them, they went from two bedrooms to four bedrooms, within the same footprint.
The number of bedrooms definitely has an impact.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mrs. Strauss and Mr. Beckel. Anybody else want to be on the list? Okay, Ms. Evans.
All right, thank you. And thank you for joining us today. I appreciate getting this background. As some have said, it is sobering, some of this, but it's better certainly to be forewarned. I guess this is a question maybe for all of you, perhaps for Mr. Plattenberg, and perhaps I missed it. Do we have an estimate on how many more students we will be expecting as a result of the development we're looking at here?
I'll just say that we work real closely together. Whenever there's a development coming in, they work with our staff to go ahead and do the yield projections. What we have found in the past, that we've used and agreed upon county-wide average. But again, with the talented staff, Ms. Gillis, and the approach from a planning perspective, we're having deeper conversations about how regionally it may be more, and in other areas it may be less. So we're looking at it in a more acute manner, so we can better project and predict what's going on. And that's what Ms. Gillis was speaking to before, when she said that those are areas of impact, the number of bedrooms and so forth. It's so we can have more granular data that we never had previously, so we can more accurately predict and project. And then we can track historically over time, and also have an accountability measure where we can look back at our projections and modify them if we need to.
So you're working on that, but at this point, don't have an overall total of any?
The overall total, each development's unique, and we can go through each one that's identified, and the ones we're working with the county where we've identified those yields.
I was just looking back at last year's CIP and looking at the, our projections for, I'm now just looking at the elementary schools. And for the most part, the projections, at least this time last year, were that things were looking pretty good. There were a lot of purple, a lot of green, very little red. So are we going to see that shift significantly this year as a result of that, of what we're seeing here?
That's a perfect segue in for us to be coming back and discussing with you fully the CIP, and showing you some of those heat areas, heat map areas. But yeah, we've got a lot of shifts happening.
Do we?
So there'll be some interesting conversations, and I'm sure many of you will be not surprised in your magisterial districts as to what's going on.
Because that does suggest we're going to see really serious changes here if we're projecting this out. And then I guess the, and I'm glad to see that you're looking at specific types of housing, because, you know, those of us who live in areas with more, you know, have more affordable housing, that does make a difference. And then I'm not sure who to ask this to, but when we talk about capital dollars, I was looking forward to the bond sales that we are going to approve on November 20th, and seeing that a lot of the bonds that have been approved have not been issued back to 2013. And I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Plattenberg, or Ms. Michael, or Ms. Quinn, or for the county, but that there were bonds going back to 2013 that haven't been issued by the county, what is that, can you explain that to me?
Yeah, the only thing I'd say is, and please finance people, we interject when you want, the bottom line is, the county manages the bond structure, and they do an outstanding job with it. So what they'll do in their whole bond portfolio, they'll sell bonds whenever they feel that they actually need them. And I know we briefed on this before, because it's a pretty frequently asked question about existing or outstanding bonds. Our bonds, or school bonds that are voted on by the voters, we use them for our schools. How the county manages the bond fund is solely up to them. It's one of the reasons why we have the AAA rating that we do, and we're very fortunate to have such a sound financial condition. And Kristin, I don't know if there's anything?
Well, we are, but if they haven't issued any bonds from the 2015 referendum, I don't understand how, why we wouldn't have any.
So, once they get voter approval via the referendum for the bonds, then they're only going to sell the bonds as they need the cash flow. So it's going to depend in terms of their overall cash flow, they're refinancing other bonds whenever they can achieve more favorable rates, and adjusting their debt service, so it's totally based on cash flow is when they're going to sell them.
So I know people know more about this than I do, but it seems to me we need as much capital dollars as we can get, frankly, for renovations and for additions.
Just want to give a heads up to my colleagues that as we discuss the next topic, temporary classroom removal, you will see why we need more capital funding. So with that, I have two more board members. We have already spent about an hour. So Mrs. Strauss to be followed, Mr. Beckel.
First of all, thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate our county staff, and very much appreciate the fact that we know, staff to staff, you all work very, very closely together, and it makes a huge difference, so thank you. And you are not the ones that determine the funding, so we can't criticize you for the amount of funding that we get or don't get. But at least the planning, I think, is done very well together. And my colleagues who are concerned about Tysons, I actually now live at Tysons, and I am not as concerned about the development of Tysons overall, because it's not producing the student yields yet. What's going up is very expensive. And, but where we are seeing an impact is on the existing neighborhoods, townhouses, older apartments, and it's kind of a slow ramp up. But I think we have one site that is identified, we need to find another site, and Piment will also come online. I think over time, our concerns for high school space is going to come, and I will no longer be on the board when some of you have to deal with high school boundaries. Thank you very much. And that'll be lots of fun. But I do think the Tysons development has been very well planned. There was a great deal of community input in that over time, and as that is sort of slowly moving out. And I have to caution people, there are great ways to be able to get through Tysons, but you have to know how to do it. I drive it every day, yes.
Janie's secret tunnel.
I will give you the secret way. Strauss secrets. Also, we need another bridge across the Potomac, that's the other issue. Cascades in Loudoun County need to give up, and we need to be able to have that bridge. Going back to, just as an example of effective negotiations with developers, with the help of Mr. Snead, Mr. Plattenberg, and Supervisor John Faust, we just have another school site off the 28 Dulles area. And it comes with a lot of hard-nose negotiating with developers and holding our breath until we actually get the resources that are needed before the Board of Supervisors actually approve of a development, and what Mr. Faust has done very well, and with Mr. Snead helping. Where there are multiple developments in one area, which is part of what we are seeing, these higher densities, rather than negotiating separately with each developer, having, forcing them and us to work together to say, because of these two, three, four, five developments that are going to go in, we're going to need a school. And we're going to have to force it, and we've done that. So that's kind of the new strategy, and it's, at least, you know, in areas where my concerns are, it is paying off. So I think that is really very good. And the bottom line is, yes, we do need more money for our capital program. But anyway, thank you for staff, for you all working as effectively. I'm beginning to really see a payoff. But the bottom line is, we've got to work with our Board of Supervisors, and we've got to get more money over time in order to figure this out.
Mr. Michael.
Very quickly, I've heard the comments regarding, including something about proffers in our legislative program. I will work with Michael on getting some sort of amendment on that front. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darinat Kofax, you will be really the last one.
Thank you for being here, and I appreciate the comments that that our staffs are working together. I think that's extremely important. I think you're experiencing the frustration of this, we don't mean to kill the messenger. And I think that is unfortunately a result, sometimes, of frustration. Some of these things are, some new things we're seeing. I think we were a little shocked at the density projections in McLean. Some of us who live on the 1 corridor understand that part and those projections, but it's still, when you have it in the middle, and you have it coming here, and then you're talking about Lincolnia, which was also new. So I really, really do appreciate the fact that we are getting this information now, and that you are creating this more effective and congenial relationship with staff. We as a board, and Ms. Strauss said it, and you're the chair this year, so, you know, this is something, when we are developing our agendas, this has to be an agenda. And it cannot be dictated by the Board of Supervisors what the agendas are every single time. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I need to say that again, because when the information on what's going to be discussed between the two boards is dictated by one board, that's not really a joint meeting, because that's not how you all work, right? You call each other, you talk to each other, you work together, you decide where we're going to talk and what we're going to do. So we are in a little bit of, so, you know, a frustration mode here. So this was not meant to be directed at you, and, you know. But I do think the one thing I would, and I realize as a staff member for an elected board where you are, and I'm sure you're doing this, but when you see things perhaps as the planners, right? As this, you know, as the county planners, when you're seeing things, please instruct that board or our board that this may not be the best direction to take this. I mean, this board is very seriously concerned about what this building up is going to do to some of our schools and what we're going to do. So I'm sure you do that, and I just encourage you to keep doing that. And Mr. Plattenberg, if you can keep reporting back to us, to our board, what you're hearing when the experts on their board, when the expert staff members are educating their board on what to do and how the outcomes are, because that's the only way we will know how we can make our concerns known. So thank you for being here, and thank you for helping to educate us today.
Thank you so much. Do we have any next steps? Okay, let's put that up. Ms. Schultz, is that you? Does anybody have a flex, what you're asking?
I don't know, at the end, the future capital needs. I think I'd like, in that, where it specifically said new public facilities, I'd like a little bit more of a list of what that list of public facilities is that's being contemplated. Because it's one thing to have the development, you know, where you're talking about residential, and you're talking about plans coming in. It's another thing to talk about public facilities. Like what specifically are you guys talking about in those plans in terms of a list?
I mean, that was a pretty broad-brush thing. I think in the Tysons plan in particular, there's a list of, these are the public facilities, which is schools. They actually, Tysons is very broad in its definition of public facilities. It talks about fire stations, police stations, it even talks about public art facilities. So it's sort of everything. And each different piece of the comprehensive plan probably has a different analysis, although in general, Mary Ann can maybe jump in, and what types of public facilities do you look at when you're talking about comprehensive plans?
Well, in Reston, for example, we have a similar list. Any of our newer activity centers that have been planned, we have a much more precise idea of exactly what's been needed. So we talk to not only schools, but libraries, police. And if there's a need for any of those facilities, we'll note that in our plan.
Right, but when I see that, all I see is, again, a broad brush, is new public facilities, not a list of potential facilities, the funding source, and the amount that's potentially associated with it, and when. And I'm not just talking Tysons, because the gut punch for me, even though it's not, and Mr. Wilson's not here, is the Dulles component to this, the Dulles Horned Inn component to this that stretches all the way down, has significant domino effect issues. And thanks a lot, Ms. Strauss, for saying, yeah, you like Pontius Pilate down there, washing your hands of boundary changes.
No, we got a school site.
We are dealing with the next steps, so, Mrs. Schultz, could you complete your sentence, your request, whether that?
New public facilities, you know, is estimated? I don't know if the word estimated, estimated public facilities, funding source, and timeframes.
We'll work collaborative, to give you some kind of language, what's currently included there?
You know what I'm talking about.
I do.
Okay, so since that's going to be, that's going to be shown as the next step to seek a consensus among board members. And, Mrs. Schultz, let me ask you one more time, whether that reflects your wording?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, with that?
Mr. Moon, I don't know whether the board would want to consider a next step, but I've listened to this for the last hour. I would be glad to meet with the county executive and look about having this as a topic for our future joint school board, Board of Supervisor meetings.
We've tried that a couple of times.
I understand you've tried it, and what I think might be powerful is putting that the board would direct me to go to the county executive and say, "This is something that we need to do jointly. We have staff here, but we're having a one-way conversation that I don't think is solving the problem we need to solve." So I'd be glad to do that if the board so chooses.
Did I ask the superintendent to address, complete the sentence, Dr. Bregron?
To approach county executive about including this topic at future joint school board, Board of Supervisor meetings? board of supervisor meetings. I think this is the exact conversation that needs to happen between these joint boards with the county executive and the superintendent in the room, problem solving and getting an action plan as a result of the conversation. Thank you.
With that?
To add to the legislative priorities, a discussion of the impact of the proffer policy that was adopted a couple of years ago and whether we need to revisit it. Revisiting the proffer language.
Revisiting the proffer language?
In our legislative priorities. Because what happened was 18 months ago, the...
I'm trying to see the timeframe. When do you think we can have that?
Add it to the legislative package.
We'd like to add it to this legislative package.
But he's going to come, he's going to, he's going to do an amendment.
Correct. We'll do an amendment to it. But I had raised this earlier and we just want to make sure it's on our follow-up activities that we all agree with it.
As long as we understand that he's going to propose an amendment and we'll be voting on it.
Someone up there is trying to say he doesn't have responsibility for this, but you need to draft a language for it with Michael. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, with that, let me go through top one. Any, any objection to the top one? Second, third one. About with that, this portion of a CIP discussion is done. I want to thank Ms. Runk and Ms. Gardiner again. Okay, us being about 75 minutes behind our schedule, we're going to continue with the next, next topic.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully we'll finish this portion by 4:15. We have 45 minutes for this topic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moon. One of the questions that was asked was really for us to talk about temporary classrooms and temporary classroom renewal. I know, Mr. Moon, this has been a, pretty, pretty much a lightning rod issue for you and Ms. Schultz regarding the capacity, the seats and the impact that we have for instruction each and every day of students in our communities throughout Fairfax County Public Schools where their education is in a temporary facility. And we've, we've put together the initial information, Mr. Sneed and his team has put together the information that you have in this packet with Ms. Gillis and they, they can go through very briefly what the information is in here and then open certainly for any questions and further discussion. What we did was you'll see that he's provided it in, in a number of different ways. I won't start to explain that because I'll take away from his presentation, but I think it allows you to look in a more granular sense as to each magisterial district and also broader across the division. So with that, Mr. Sneed?
Mr. Plattenberg, before we go to one, Mr. Sneed, do I understand this correctly that full discussion over this topic will take much more than 45 minutes? So today is just the first step of this longer conversation we'll need to have.
Yes, sir. This is a significant issue. It affects everything you spoke about in the last item regarding capital investment, regarding the lack of capital funding, et cetera. It's a longer-term conversation. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so trailers are one of my least favorite subjects because I, you know, I tell people that I feel like the largest trailer dealer on the East Coast. So besides the trailers that we have at our schools for overcrowding, I have around 330 construction sites give or take. So that's quite a few. So over the past two years, we, through the, both the capital program and the shift of enrollment at some schools, we've reduced the total quantity of temporary classrooms by 158. So 131 of those as a result of the capital projects that have finished between the fall of school year 15, 16 and this fall. And then in another 10 sites, we removed 27 temporary classroom trailers. At the same period of time that we have added 51 trailers at around 17 schools. Now, so when we look at the projects that are either under construction today or going to bid this school year, we have another 173 temporary classrooms that will be removed. So I would say in about, and that would be over the next three to four years. So I, I have an approximate guess that we would be sitting at around 649 temporary classrooms in 2023 or so. I do believe the number will be somewhat improved within a year or two of that, just simply because of the, the projects that we're getting ready to start planning. Those would represent an additional 100 temporary classrooms to be removed. So not knowing what we're going to add at other sites, I would estimate that we would have between 550 and 600 temporary classrooms. And this is before I was a director, so I can't necessarily, I'm not sure how valid they are. I think they are pretty good. The lowest number that we've had that I can see goes back to 1992. That was 602 temporary classrooms. So we, we will have, I think we'll be below that number. You know, and it's hard to, you know, remember that just three years ago, we were sitting at 975 and we're down to 822. In addition, you know, so I think the capital program has been very effective. Since 2010, we've increased by 13,567 students. And if you remember, we added a significant number of temporary classrooms for full day K.
Can you repeat that just?
Yes.
Since 2010, what?
We've increased by, to this fall, 13,567 students. And, you know, as I said, you know, we've added trailers even, or temporary classrooms even with an ongoing capital program. It's mostly due to full day K. I think we added about 52 of those. So the question is, and I think that, why do we have so many? There's a couple of reasons why. And we, we've all talked about the, the reasons. I mean, one, we know that we, that the capital fund is not sufficient to keep up with our growth and renovate our schools in a timely manner. And we're always having this struggle between do we allow school to become, you know, just almost antiquated before we renovate or do we accommodate capacity? In addition, we know that we have some programmatic reasons that occurs. It's primarily due to, you know, we, you know, we have some centers that have so many kids in there that it leads to that. In fact, we're dealing with a case right now where, you know, we have an uncapped program and the exact amount of students at the school is over capacity happens to be the kids that are moving in for the program. So I think, you know, there are a couple of solutions. Obviously, the number one, one would be to increase our capital funding. But secondly, we should certainly look at our program distribution. And those are the two most effective means. I wouldn't suggest to you all that some minor, I think that some minor boundary changes could alleviate this as well, but I don't know that that would be the, the optimal or answer when it comes to just removing temporary classrooms. You're going to add on now, right? What's yours? I was going to go quick.
Okay, anything else to present?
We're trying to be expeditious and just answer your question.
I have, I have a Ms. Schultz to be followed by Ms. Karen Corbin-Standers.
You don't happen to have the number of students in each magisterial district?
We don't have the exact number included in your packet. What we did is we took an average of 25 per classroom.
No, I'm, I'm just talking the number of students in the magisterial districts.
So you can figure out percent or something like that?
Because from what I recall, I think the highest number of students, or maybe it's the highest number of high school students, I can't remember, is in Sully. But, so what would be interesting, and the reason I'm trying to do this is because there's a little decoding that needs to go on here. Because if I'd seen, if I'd thought about this in advance, I would have, I would have provided this. But we sort of did this part just for our colleagues as meeting managers. We did this part a little bit late because this wasn't exactly what we were looking for. So for example, if you see Mason District, 2684, I'm not exactly sure what's going on with Drainsville and Providence, 2952. So the total number of students, you have to turn your head sideways, total number of students in temporary instructional classrooms, the more students you have in temporary classrooms, and I'm not going to say it's 100%, but the smaller the classroom sizes are in that district, correct? Yeah. That's okay. You can say yes. This, on average, you're going to have more children in, in class in trailers when your class sizes are smaller because you're taking, this is my teaspoon of peanut butter across a, a, a piece of bread. You're spreading out the same number of students in a school and because you've depressed the number of students in the classroom, you wind up needing more trailers, therefore more children are being educated in trailers.
Correct. So if you, you know, we published that type of data for a long time in the dashboard. So when you look at our efficiency, the school efficiency or square footage per student, you can see that, that, that is correct.
So the inverse is true. So the inverse is that in the places where you have fewer number of trailers, the reason you have fewer number of trailers is because you have higher class sizes. So that's part of, you know, this is, this is the conversation. Nope. I'm ha, I'm happy to take my spreadsheets and the time I've spent on class size up against anyone. So let's, we can have that conversation off, away from the table. But the, the highest density of students inside buildings is, occurs more in districts where you have fewer trailers because we squash the kids into the classrooms. So you have a higher, and I'm not going to say it's true in every case. I'm saying it's a maxim and it really does play out. So when I have discussions about equity and the fact that there's, you know, 1,800 trailers in the Springfield District versus 2,900 in the Providence District or 2,684, there, there's bad sides to both of those. It's bad to have more kids in trailers. It's bad to have high density of trailers in certain magisterial districts because we shouldn't be educating kids in trailers. The inverse is true that if you have extremely high classroom sizes on average across school buildings and the, the teachers in that building all have, you know, close to max class sizes, that's, that's a stressor as well. And that also means that we probably have filled those buildings to capacity, but we haven't necessarily, we've increased the class size because we don't give them quote-unquote "needs-based staffing" to get more teachers. Therefore, if you don't have more teachers, you don't need more classrooms, which means you don't need more trailers. So there are, there's an, these are both sides of an equity coin. It's just a different view of it. And, you know, these, this is the conversation, and I thank Dr. Brabran for, for sort of saying, hey, do you want me to wink, wink, go to the Board of Supervisors and, and County Executive and say this needs to be our next conversation? Because, you know, we, I, I, we're at a crisis stage. I mean, I, I don't say crisis very often. This is a crisis. We are a facilities crisis stage. I think the first time I did the SAC classroom calculation of the number of classrooms that are in a trailer, in a trailer, because a brick and mortar classroom is reserved in an elementary school, I still remember the figure, I think it was 6,128 seats. So that's educating in a trailer in an elementary school instead of in a brick and mortar classroom because of our MOU and our MOU forcing our own children out of a brick and mortar classroom in an elementary school and into a trailer to be educated during the day to preserve, you know, a brick and mortar classroom. This is a very serious fundamental problem and it isn't, it's not only not going away in the time since I first brought this up six years ago, it's gotten worse. We have more trailers, more kids in classrooms, higher student population and a, a, a problem that doesn't appear to get, I, I, I'm not saying that the Board of Supervisors doesn't care about it, but we are not shedding or pushing for a shed of light on this issue as much as I think we should be. And that goes to the, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Plattenberg, I think it's about a 60-40 split in terms of we have 60-plus percent of the, the square feet of infrastructure. We're at 27 million or maybe we're at 28 million, I don't know, which is about 60-plus percent of the total infrastructure between us and the Board of Supervisors, but we only have about 40% of the dollars. Is that about right? Rough. I mean, I'm, I'm not asking.
Approximately, 75, yeah.
So, you know, we have, and that doesn't even account for the, the usage, that, that seven days a week, community use, high, I mean, a, a, an office building that's used from nine to five or even a library, the, the wear and tear on a library over the course of a week versus the wear and tear on maybe, you know, a roughly similar square foot of one of our schools just isn't comparable. So when I see the kind of presentation that we saw before where they're saying, well, you know, this is the kind of planning that we're planning on planning and we're planning new public facilities and we haven't addressed a 30-year renovation queue that's almost $1 billion in the hole and a burgeoning swelling student population, never mind 822 classrooms representing 19 and a half thousand of their constituents, just like there are constituents. This is where I think there is a pressure point that needs to be a part of our conversation.
Okay, I have Karen Corbin-Standers, Ms. Evans, Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. McLachlan. But before I go to Ms. Corbin-Standers, could you, could you check the amount of capital funding the county is using versus ours, let's say for the last five, 10-year period? So I want to make sure that we are using the right numbers when we do that. Okay? So, Ms. Corbin-Standers?
Thank you. Very helpful. Couple of questions. One, I see program, I see the number of instructional classrooms being held in trailers or temporary classrooms. Do you also have the numbers of non-instructional classrooms but being used for other types of services such as testing or special education, you know, one-off programs versus?
Sure. So that column all the way to the right, that's the total number of temporary classrooms?
Okay.
Including that first column that lists the number of temporary instructional classrooms?
Okay, so you see in certain districts, they're using the trailers more heavily for instructional space than others, I see. The second piece of it is, do we have a life cycle of trailers? How long you think is the optimum number of years that a trailer? Because I know that you have gone in and totally rebuilt them. So I guess I would do a cost-benefit analysis of, is it cheaper to go back in and rebuild or just to retire?
Well, at some point, right now, we're able to get about 20 years' life. So it's, depending on the trailer, at the eight to 10-year mark, we rehab the entire thing. We reskin the outside, the inside, new floor, ceiling, everything to try to achieve 20 years. That's as well as we can do.
And so when you look at these numbers, how many of these trailers are over 20 years old? And do we have a retire, when we look at retiring trailers, are we retiring the oldest ones first or is it primarily we retire them when we do our renovations?
Oh, no. I mean, typically, certainly the oldest are going to go first. You know, so for us to rehab a trailer with... know, except for us to rehab a trailer, which costs about 3,500 to 5,000, depending on the condition, that's for a single classroom, a new would run us 22,000 to 24,000 dollars, so it makes sense why we would do it. Um, not complaining, I just don't know if you all were aware, you know, at one point, and we have a, an operating count that we use for overcrowding, um, around 10 years ago, that was at $6 million, now it's at 2.4 million, so with the growing population, moving programs, I've done the best I can, when the thing has been cut by 55%, and so, I, if I wanted to buy new, we don't have the funding to do it, I have no option but to rehab as many as I can.
You talk about programs, what programs are the, um, the, which programs are the ones that drive the, um, the use of trailers? Because there was an assumption made by Ms. Schultz, that it was the smaller classrooms that were driving the use of trailers, are there other programs that actually drive it?
Well, it, it's certainly, I mean, obviously, the majority, not all, but I may have to go back and look, the majority of the AAP centers, some of the immersion schools, but the other thing that we've been trying to do is move our special ed kids closer to where they live, a lot of times, facility is not, uh, there, you know, inadequate, so we have to create that at, at those schools. You know, another thing that, and, and I think that you pointed this out, is you can look at how the spaces are used, to have an idea of what drives some of the, the use of a temporary classroom, so, I mean, the, you know, a whole myriad of reasons, and sometimes it's down just to the individual school level, I mean, we can certainly look at that.
Hi, Ms. Evans.
Uh, thank you, this is very, very helpful. Um, the, these are only trailers, not modulators, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, just looking at, at the schools that I, I know best, um, just to clarify some of these things, Annandale Terrace is saying, uh, you've got 13 classrooms, and, and I'm sorry, would you, would you tell me what, what's the difference between temporary instructional classrooms and number of temporary classrooms?
Sure, we listed that out, um, as a footnote.
Oh, okay.
The following instruction is included in the temporary instructional classroom counts, core, self-contained special education, special education pullout, art, band and strings, computer rooms, ESOL, FLEX, health PE, music, world language, multipurpose resource, work transition program, and high school electives.
Okay. Um, so at Annandale Terrace, they're, they're going to have a renovation, they're in the process of that, so presumably they'll, they'll lose those when, um, they won't need those trailers anymore, correct? Okay, so the other thing I'm, I'm trying to understand, is at schools, they're showing that they have seats, in some cases hundreds of seats, um, we're also showing that we have trailers there, for example, Poe is showing considerable seats, um, Annandale High School has hundreds of seats, but still 27 trailers, um, why do we have 27 trailers, I mean, we have modular there as well.
We've been working with the, uh, the principal there as part of the transition, he's been working with us to help reduce that, uh, we didn't want to take as an aggressive approach as we initially were starting to, due to the transition and the cultural changes in some of the classes that he had in there, um, to maintain the atmosphere for his faculty and his team. From a facility standpoint, we absolutely said, these trailers got to go, um, but we're working with the principal.
I can see why we want to keep the modular there, it costs a considerable amount of money to, uh, to put that modular in there, and we may need that capacity at a later date, but, uh, as far as the trailers are concerned, um, so you're, you are working on getting some of those?
Absolutely, and we'll take that as a desire for us to continue that work.
Well, you know, I, I will, we'll yield to the principal on that, as far as what he feels he needs, so, um, if, if the principal feel he, he needs that for some reason, I'm not, um, trying to suggest otherwise.
No, we've, I understood clearly, we've been working real well with.
Okay, um, so, but again, you know, Poe, Park Lawn, um, a number of, Wayanoke are showing that they, they have capacity and yet have, have trailers, so I think that's something that we have to be aware of when we're, um, talking about this. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's not, as far as class size, there's a reason we have lower class sizes at our highest need schools, so, you know, I'm certainly not going to want to go in a direction of, of changing, um, our philosophy on that. Um, and lastly, uh, to Mr. Moon's point, um, I believe, you said you wanted to get the amount of funding that the county is using versus FCPS, I, I don't know if this is in addition to that, or if it's similar to, but I, you know, compared to what we're approving on, um, Monday, I would certainly be interested in seeing the amount of, uh, bonds that were approved in the referendums of 2012, 2014, and 16, and how many they issued, uh, out of, out of the, that approved, could we get that figure? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I have a Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Mrs. McLachlan.
Um, first of all, Ms. Schultz, I'm very pleased that you said, and what's happening in Drainsville? Um, and just to, a lot of the stuff that's going on in the McLean High School Pyramid is the Tysons, um, uh, development, and it's the, it's the communities around Tysons, these are older neighborhoods, uh, and also just plain high interest in that part of the county for either redevelopment, or people just simply moving in, and it's just, it is, it's the Haycock, Kent Gardens, Lemon Road, is just, people buy some of those properties sight unseen from other countries and just move in, so, um, uh, the, um, so that's where the resulting, where a lot of those trailers are coming, and it is Tysons, slow growth in, so, you know, it is, it is catching up with our renovations, um, but we do have plans of how to deal with that over time. And obviously, the Route 28 corridor and Hutchison, very, very high need school, and they need all the help they can get, and we are very proud that they are fully accredited, we are so proud of that school, they have, um, huge, huge challenges, and they're meeting them well. So, at any rate, that's, Ms. Schultz, you want to know what was going on in Drainsville, that's what's going on in Drainsville, but bottom line is, we do need, we do need more capital dollars, but again, I have to say, there is some very good planning going on in Drainsville, and I, I have to credit John Fowes, and you guys, you are doing a very good job holding your breath and pushing hard, and we're, we're seeing results, so, thank you.
I have a Mrs. McLachlan.
So, one, uh, thing is, I look at, uh, the, the data that you've provided today, and I will say, this is extremely helpful, the way this chart was done, um, really appreciate, uh, the brain is able to chunk this so quickly, I mean, I can just look through every one of the nine magisterial districts, and look for the numbers to pop out, so this is outstanding. Uh, one drill-down question I had was, I can see where some numbers, you just, they leap off the page, and you say, how can there be that many trailers? But some may be due to a CIP project, correct? So, my request as a next step would be that this document, you kind of revise it a little bit, and put an asterisk by every one of the schools that has a CIP project, so that, that way we can really identify which ones we know are just a temporary impact from the, the renovation, especially the right in the midst of it, whereas other ones, it's, it's a problem.
By definition, they are all temporary.
Ah, yes, Mr. Moon, not, that would be the case, but when we see that even from the one-page business statement, that in the next four years, we hope to reduce it from 768 to 650, that's not temporary, that, that's definitely not temporary. So, um, I, I do want to highlight a couple of things, um, so I, I noticed, for example, in Braddock District, um, Woodson only has two, Lake Braddock, it appears, has none, but Robinson has 17, um, Frost Middle School, nine, now for the big one, the, again, thinking from an elementary school, Wakefield Forest Elementary, 11, it's an elementary school, and there's 11 trailers there, so, um, going to the next district, Herndon High School, 27, CIP project, is that why?
Yes, they're being renovated.
But, but McLean is not, so McLean's got 10.
That's a problem, that's a problem.
Yeah, so then another one, McNair, 22, under renovation, right? So, new school, okay, uh, South Lakes High School, 17, they're not, they're putting on an addition, so the addition has forced the temporary trailers.
Well, most of these schools, what you're seeing, and those are the actual counts prior to the completion of the project, so that, these counts do not include the temporary classrooms associated with the project, they're separate, so if you recall, when I said, we have 822, and then associated with the Capitol projects, I have another around 300, a little over 300. Right, that, so the 173 that I said in the, the current projects, those are some of the ones that you're seeing there.
Okay, so, uh, just to be clear, in case, you know, anyone's watching this and trying to understand it as, as well as I'm trying, so Herndon, when we list 27 temporary classrooms, those aren't expected to be there for very long, that's, that's a problem that we're going to be able to correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but some of them, like, let's go with Wakefield Forest Elementary with 11 trailers, there's nothing on the horizon right now to fix that.
Well, actually, um, Wakefield Forest is really close in the queue, so I think they're going to show up, and we'll be able to.
Okay, close in the queue for their renovation?
Yes, yes, I agree with you.
Right, but to my point that right now, that's just, so, um...
Throughout the whole document, we could kind of put an asterisk on the one, the projects we're currently working on, and maybe projects that are upcoming?
Yeah, I think something that sort of gives an asterisk that says, the number looks bad, but it's, but it's, it is a CIP-related, um...
A solution is coming up.
Yeah, yeah, because I think some of these, like Hybla Valley, is there a solution coming for Hybla Valley, or is that just overcrowding?
There, uh, there's a, a couple, but yes, the Hybla Valley's in this bond.
Okay, so, uh, you know, Annandale Terrace?
They're in this bond.
Okay.
For construction.
Annandale High School, 21 there.
I prefer not to answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, you know, 21 does, you know, and I have a 30%, of the school, so Sandy and I both have to answer to the community, when, if they see this number, they're going to want to know, and I understand, we can talk offline and get more clarity, but the, those are the things that, again, I think the community tries to understand, and, um, I guess I would, you know, West Potomac, why does West Potomac have 18 trailers?
That's why West Potomac is listed to have, um, yeah, yeah, they're, they're listed to have a, a new addition on the bond.
Okay.
And, uh...
So, once again, what we're finding is, because of our population booms, we're just having to build lots of additions onto our schools, um, to, okay, so, yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
And then I think the whole point of having additional CIP dollars is, if we had additional funding, and we could move the renovations along much faster, we can eliminate the temporary trailers a lot faster.
Right, so, not to preempt anything again, but, so I would appreciate the, the asterisk that kind of says, here's the ones where we actually have solutions in the pipeline, that's fine. What I would also appreciate, if I missed it somewhere, it's my apologies, but I think it would be really helpful, Dr. Braybrand, this is coming from you and staff, to say to the board with something like this, I don't want to preempt where you might have planned to do it elsewhere, but I think we do need to have something that says, from your mind's eye, here are, you know, 10 to, you know, 20 schools out of, you know, the top 10% out of the 200 schools, where we're saying, we are going to need some real board work on, on addressing some problems here, this isn't, no amount of CIP is going to fix this, because right now, I don't really have a sense collectively as a board, I know that you work with our magisterial districts, but I think in the end, we own this as a board, and so, it would be helpful to kind of get a sense that we're on the same page with each other collectively as a county, where, where are our biggest problems, and how are we working together to get some alleviation there?
Right, so fortunately, we have a CIP work session in two months, that will give you guys time to look through this, and there's frequently instances where we're looking at a condition at a school, and the solution isn't always to build our way out, it isn't just because we have limited funding, but there's other decisions to be made, so, uh, we'll have the draft up in a few weeks, and then you guys will have plenty of time to think about it before we come back in January. We are going to be here next month as well, to talk about enrollment trends.
Right, and I appreciate that, I just, I wanted to kind of plant the seed, Dr. Braybrand, because I know that Kevin and Jeff do an incredible job in this arena, and there's only so much staff, but when you have 200 schools, I mean, we, we need to kind of have a game plan, and I, 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 I struggle sometimes as a board member, that I don't want to go dig into some of these numbers and not find, and then find out that, no, no, that's got the solution already to it, but, and I think that it's hard for Jeff and Kevin to sit down with nine individual magisterial board members to go through, so, maybe if we figure out that the two-by-twos, where like Ms. Schultz and I share so many of our schools because of where our boundaries are with our magisterial districts, it might save you guys time too.
I have a Miss Belchuk to be followed by Mr. Narco-Fex, and myself.
Hi, thank you, um, appreciate the work and the way it's presented, first of all, I want to commend you, it's just that Luther Jackson, and love the new science classrooms, um, so I think that was a really innovative solution, where the principal said, we don't need this locker space, and we turned it into two science labs, so, being that I believe that's the school with the most classrooms, or one of them, uh, near the top, I know we're looking at a boundary change there, so, I guess that kind of thing, I'm wondering, are, A, are we looking at, um, innovative solutions like that, hey, maybe we don't need all of these lockers in this area?
Well, the fact of the matter is, besides, uh, moving trailers around, so the capacity architects who, at one time were under designing and construction, are now in planning under Jessica, they work with my design staff, and we do this every summer, we're creating spaces, and we have, but as I said, the budget's very limited, so last summer, we built similar spaces in West Potomac, the, and in McLean High School, so that's another thing, we do this all the time, yes.
Okay, I mean, so it just, that seems like a good solution, um, I guess the, the downside of that, um, is that we now have these middle schools that are growing, um, and some may be wanting us to relook our formulas for security staffing, um, because they're feeling like they're getting to the size of a high school, um, and are still being staffed like smaller middle schools, so that's kind of a separate conversation, Dr. Braybrand and Jeff, but if we can start to look at, as we try to compact more students into some of our growing area, middle schools, um, can we, can we rethink the security formula for their staffing? Um, and then finally, I know I talked to Matt Gilfoyle about this, but I love the way this is set up, and I had asked if, if it would be possible to, um, get the information in the CIP, which is just so incredible, um, but to help families have asked for it to be broken down by the pyramid level, you know, not adding additional work right now, but it's such a huge document, and people who are not used to looking at it every single day, are saying, help me advocate even for the bond, let me see what it means to my, my pyramid, so, I don't know if you could work with Matt Gilfoyle and his staff to help us communicate, um, this information and CIP information, um, more at a pyramid or, you know, a pyramid level? Yeah, but extracting it, so people aren't like going through and trying to find every little detail, and whether we're connecting it to this, uh, or other, so like page 41 of the CIP, and then the individual pages, um, if that makes, I don't know if I'm making sense at this point of the day?
Then we could kind of show you where, what we have, and then maybe what you're looking for.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I have a Mr. Narco-Fex next.
Thank you for, um, the, the charts in particular, um, about the classroom overcrowding by magisterial district, that's excellent, and that's, as many of my colleagues said, very, very helpful for us, so thank you. Um, I think, you know, this is a question that I probably should have asked when the county staff was here, but, um, when we talk about, and, and this really doesn't have to do with my district, it's more Ms. Strauss and Mr. Wilson's, um, that, you know, they talked about looking at, uh, the vacancy rate, you know, we've had high vaca-, high vacancy rates, and are we looking at that when we're looking at, you know, you talk about the office... And are we looking at that when we're looking at, you know, you talk about the office space, the office buildings and things like that. Are we looking at those particularly out in the Dulles, McLean areas? Because it's not so much in my area, but that was more of a question I probably should have asked the last part of this.
The answer is yes, we have in the past where, you know, we, we look at any option, any possibility. Kevin and his team does an excellent job. If there's vacant office space, he'll review it. He reviewed a number of different parcels.
Well, I, I think that's very important because that was the excuse that the Board of Supervisors continues to use. We can't, we can't, you know, we have so much unleased office space, so we can't give you enough money. So, and, no, that was, that has been.
Right, I think you actually made a good point. Because if you paid attention to what they were saying is that these parcels that are being developed were originally for a commercial use.
Okay.
So if you're a developer sitting on a piece of land, and what do you want to do? Well, if we have a vacant office space, you wouldn't build that, right?
Right.
You're going to build residential where there's a demand. And they look at these units, especially along the Dulles corridor, even though if you live out along Route 28 or Herndon, we probably know what's coming. If they build it from, you know, fundamentally the toll road down to Westfield, it's, we're probably, but that's what they're looking at. It's converting all of those particular parcels from commercial to residential. Which is why, you know, Jessica initially, when, last year, when she started out as a planner, I wouldn't have known this until she told me. And I should give her recognition also for putting this chart together. I didn't do it, just your new director of planning did. But, so when we finally recognized that, we spent months, Jeff and Janie, Jessica and I, with Supervisor Faust, in an attempt to mitigate this. We need two elementary schools in an area where three elementary schools are in half a mile of each other. So you have Hutchison at 1,000 kids, you have Coates at 835, we have McNair at 1,400. And even by the small, the smaller formula, which was our yield, right? We were using overall yield average. We need two elementaries, let alone the impact to a high middle, which we haven't even calculated. And that's within that small of an area. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think they're going to go for residential because they're not right now. Commercial is not, it's too much vacant commercial property.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, that wasn't crystal clear to me during the earlier part. And I just saw that I had left over that question. You know, I, I think we all know what's in the future. I think, and I think perhaps we will need guidance from staff on the best way to pursue this. You know, there's overcrowding in my area, there's a new elementary school bonded. We're kind of waiting for some of the embark properties to see what happens before we do that. There's all of that in McLean. And this is going to require at some point, and I think we would need guidance because it is, you know, the six years that I've been on this board, I have had many, many issues that have been difficult to manage. But I understand boundaries is its own brand of happiness. And, you know, how we are going to navigate that? If we just kind of do it all at once, or we do, but, but when you have Tysons, you have Lincolnia, you have Mount Vernon, and we, there's a lot of things happening. And how to best do that, I think we're going to need a lot of guidance from staff. And we are going to have to be very prepared during that time that most other issues are off the radar of this board. It's a different way to plan. And if we haven't really talked about that as we go forward in our strategic plan, and that has to kind of be looked at too, you know, because it, it will take a lot of board work. And even though the plan will then be kind of out of the board, you know, it should be moving forward. But there's always going to be things that the board, but that's going to be a very difficult time whenever that happens for this board and how we best can do it, section by section. But it's going to have a domino effect.
I know, Dr. Bray Branson, you seem to be wanting to speak on this, but I'm going to ask you to hold off until I am done with mine. Because I've been wanting to speak on this for, for, I don't know how many years. So let me get these out. In my colleagues, to my colleagues, I think I had shared this with the staff when we were preparing for this work session. My bottom line is this, my bottom line is this, this needs to be brought up in more open manner to the attention of county Board of Supervisors and the community at large. They need to see how many students we are educating in very, very subpar condition for how long? I mean, some of the classrooms may be very, really, really temporary. But most of these, many of these classrooms, temporary classrooms, are permanent temporary classrooms, which is unacceptable. I mean, I find that unacceptable, and that can only be dealt with by the funding authority. The $155 million we, we get, I know, granted that we get another, we receive, we began receiving another $13.4 million. But how long has that amount been fixed? And let's see how that number's been, number is compared to the amount of capital funding county has been using over the same period of time. Whether their capital funding has been, has remained the same all these years, just like ours has. And see how that compares. And also, I want us to do, do some homework, prep work, before we approach the county Board of Supervisors at a joint meeting. So, Mr. Snead, I'm going to ask you a whole bunch of things. So I'm, I'm going to speak quickly, more quickly than I have been. I think earlier, I think Mr. Platt, you suggested potential three solutions, three ways to deal with this. More capital funding, that I'll be advocating for. And you said, program distributions, and also minor boundary changes. I want to know, in, in very rough estimate, if you did some changes to the program distributions and some minor boundary changes, how many classrooms, temporary classrooms, we can reduce in a certain amount of time? Because I think that has to be laid out, because supervisors can certainly say, you have excess capacity in those areas, why don't you do boundary changes? Oh, you have all these programs, specialized programs, these are overcrowding those schools. Why can't you shift those programs from other places? We need to be prepared to be able to answer those questions. So in as much as possible, if you could provide us those information, I would appreciate it. Another, another, you know, I think Mr. Narkofex might have been where Ms. Evans mentioned a modulars. I know that when we build a brand new building, with a brick and mortar, we don't, we don't put whole bunch of modulars to educate on our schools. We don't call it a new building when you put up a whole lot of modulars. Which means, I have to assume that brick and mortar is supposedly better than modulars. We prefer brick and mortar as opposed to modulars. And we have close to 9,000 students being educated in modulars throughout the county. And we have, as we see up there, 19, over 19,000, you know, students in temporary classrooms. Meaning that we have close to 30,000 students being educated in subpar condition. In my mind, again, that's not acceptable. I want to see, I know that we've been able to reduce, and we will continue to reduce some temporary classrooms as we go through CIP. But I want to see, in five years, how many classrooms, how many temporary classrooms will still be left? And how many modulars? And how many kids will be educated? In 10 years, how many? In 15 years, so that I can show to supervisors and community at large, because who's going to have to support us, that at a particular location, we'll see at least 5,000 students being educated in the temporary classrooms for the next 15 years, 20 years. Is that acceptable to you? And is that acceptable to Fairfax County? I know, I've said enough. Ms. Schultz. Oh, Dr. Bray Branson, I'm sorry.
Let me let you all finish your conversation, I'll add in if I need to at the end.
Okay, a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I, I think the other, can we go to the other, to very classrooms by school? I'm not exactly sure, and this isn't a criticism, because this was again a laid out, Mr. Moon and I, these two charts did not exist when we had our meeting manager.
On Wednesday.
We asked for these. This should be by pyramid. This, this one should be sorted by pyramid. I, I've tried to figure it out, it's not alphabetical, I don't think. Okay, well, that doesn't, that doesn't help. So what, what it should be is, is to mirror the CIP, it should be by pyramid, that will help. Number two, the number of trailers over time. We should have, you know, basically probably like a 10-year running total in the CIP. But certainly as a follow-up to this, so for our next step, number of, number of classrooms over time. You don't need analysis, you just, the number, the number is fine, the raw number's fine, and we can all look at that number. I want to address the point that Ms. McLachlan brought up about the, the number of trailers by school and the impact, because we do need to have an impact, sort of an impact statement that if, that we have trailers that are there. Can you go to the Springfield District, please? To West Springfield. So at the bottom, you see West Springfield High School. So that's under, everybody knows that's under major renovation, right? You see, there are 12 temporary classrooms there, major renovation. If you could look just above that, at Centerville High School, which I keep bringing up, which has a dearth of 555 seats in four years, 14 trailers, no renovation. That's the impact. Do you see, this is the exact thing that I'm talking about, is you have 12 trailers at West Springfield because you have a renovation, you have 14 at Centerville with no renovation going on. In addition, if you could go to Sully, Westfields. So down, 13, no, no renovation. If you go to Braddock, please, Robinson, well, you already said it, Ms. McLachlan, 17. So that, so even where you have a renovation going on, you have fewer trailers in some places that are as a result of, and about to be relieved of the need to have them. And you have other places where there's no end in sight, and there's a long-term impact, you know. And when you're talking about a secondary school, that means from middle school all the way through high school, those kids are subjected to trailers. And that's, that's the equity piece. I do want to say that we are reviving CPDC. It is on, been on life support, but we have our first meeting, I think, next week. Oh, jeez, for the love of Pete. It is still on life support, apparently it's on oxygen as well. But I do want to ask, you said there were 13,567 students added since 2010. Mr. Plattberg, Mr. Snead, how many new schools have we built in that amount of time? No, how many new schools? 13,567.
I think.
One, right, Mason Craft. Okay, well, all right, so one and a half.
Fort Belvoir.
At Fort, Fort Belvoir. Okay, so two and a half schools, because we split one school. So two and a half, you can generously say three schools. 13,567 students and three schools. That's the conversation we need to have with the supervisors. Now, granted, we've added classrooms with renovations, but the trailers over time, the SAC classroom brick mortar instead of the kids being educated in a trailer instead, don't, don't, don't grimace at me. This is where we have the ability. So I did have the next step of the number of students per magisterial district, so we understand the distribution. So I think we're ready for next steps.
Okay, next steps, oh, Dr. Bray Branson.
Well, I think, it's what, our fourth or fifth month together? Listen, even today, I'm bringing you topics of things with a solution or a menu of solutions. You may not like all of it, but I think you're going to find, in this superintendent and this leadership team, we're going to bring you the material necessary for you to make decisions. They're hard decisions. The truth of the matter is, and my belief, over the years and years in Fairfax, we've gotten to this point because this has been the path of least political resistance. That's the truth for the school board and for the Board of Supervisors. To solve the problems that are being presented today are going to require a far greater level of collaboration between the board, school board and the Board of Supervisors than has ever existed before. I think staff is beginning to develop those deeper relationships. And I think the menu that Mr. Moon outlined, and it's going to be somewhere on that menu, and we have to develop the menu for, for you, and we will, between additional funds, between looking at program changes and realignment, because we have a lot of programs and we move a lot of kids to a lot of different schools that are not their natural boundary, and looking at boundary adjustments themselves, which we have been loath to touch. It's been considered the third rail. It's come up in region meetings already, and we're going to have to figure out and embrace that we need to have the promise of excellence, the promise of equity in every school, so that when we go to these adjustments, it doesn't, for the community, appear to be a win-lose. That someplace I go, I'm going to be a winner, and someplace I'm not. Every school in Fairfax County is a place for every kid to be a winner, for every kid to have their full potential. They're hard conversations. The good news is, I think we're beginning to prepare our community for the tough decisions we have. But I want you to know, I'll bring you the decisions. I'm not afraid to make a decision, I love this place. It's not going to be easy, the intentions are good. We're just going to have to work harder than before, collaborate more with the Board of Supervisors, and be willing to make some tough calls. But this board has already shown in my time here, you've tackled some very tough issues. You all don't necessarily agree completely on all of them, but you find a way to come to consensus and make a decision, and that's what we're going to have to do. I really do want to appreciate the staff. They've been, you know, they've been busting their tails, working a lot of hours to get it done the way this board wants to see it done, and we're going to continue to do that. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Dr. Bray Branson, with that, next steps up. Okay, board members, I want you to all take a look at what we got up there. Wherever you have your name next to it, make sure that the wording's correctly put up.
On the fourth bullet, just make it, we need to make that clear, we're talking about county, county bonds. Thank you.
How, I'm sorry, that's not how many have been issued, it's how much. How much, how much of the bonds, how much of the bonds approved.
Yes, the bond referendum.
Have been sold and issued.
Yeah, approved in 2012, 14, and 16 referendum, referenda.
Okay, bottom, it's not just the boundary adjustments, but also program redistributions and additional capital funding, right? Because those are three suggested solutions to deal with. Boundary adjustments, comma. And then delete with.
I, I don't know if there are any more, but do you have the number of trailers over time? Like a 10-year history of trailers? Sure you will. Okay. Sure you will. I'll give it to you if you need it.
Okay, Mrs. McLachlan?
For, for my bullet on the CIP projects pending, Kevin and Jeff, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, I would, first I would just say which schools have current or pending projects. But the question would be, how pending are we talking about? I mean, obviously, our CIP can go out 10 years, I don't think that's really helpful, but.
We talked about providing a key to more inform you was the intent. So, good point.
Yeah, thank you.
And did you have the trailers by school in pyramid order?
I didn't see those.
It, it's just the same document, just. It's just the same document, just we, you know, added in pyramid order.
Oh, it's an alphabetical rundown.
Yep, yep.
Okay, you had, Ms. Corbinson?
It goes back to the question of where there's capacity in the building, where there's excess capacity in the building, but we're still using trailers.
That's the.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to save some time, if board members could all take a look at what's up there. And if you have any reservation or questions or objection to any one of those, please speak up. Could you move up the screen so that, who's at the bottom, could it be seen? Any, anyone?
If you'd go up a bit, I, if, if board members are all right with this, under the bullet about how many trailers are over twenty years old, could we also see how many modulars are over twenty years old?
Okay. Anybody else? If not, thank you very much. We'll, we'll take a two-minute break.
And we are going to do FCPS on next. No, because we have teachers here. So FCPS on will be next.